Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here tonight together to discuss the work for the town. We ask that as we go forward that you would guide and direct us and help us make the right decisions for the town and its residents. We ask that our conversations be friendly and that you protect each one of us and keep us safe. In your name we pray. Amen.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Pleased to be here. Okay, let's start. Everybody got their copy of the minutes?
Yes.
Any recommended changes, modifications, anything?
I make a motion that the minutes for the two previous meetings be approved as presented.
On favor?
Aye.
Claims and warrants for signature.
March into the month claims, $406,804.96. April 15th meeting, $205,834.67.
You want to hand out for the signature now?
I make a motion that the March end of the month claims for $406,804.96 and April 15th meeting claims in the amount of $205,834.67 be approved.
On favor?
Aye.
In front of you, it's a little packet.
Payroll warrants.
Yes.
Yeah, an amount of $31,727.47. That's for March 25th, April 1st, 8th, and 15th.
Motion to approve those.
I make... Go ahead. You're all right. I didn't hear you. Sorry.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I Scott.
Get a minute, hurry up, Captain, let him know. We'll do the bank reconciliations. Utilities is $2,173,500.70. For the town, it's $1,088,857.31. Payroll, $2,008.38. Testament deposits, $34,430. Motion to approve those.
I make a motion, we approve the April bank reconciliations.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. One water and sewer adjustment account, 8109-14 Susan Cusely. And we've got a billing adjustment of $49.97. Motion to approve.
I make the motion.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Now, we'll go Jimmy, hiding back there in the corner. There you go. What's this?
That's for you, present.
The quote for the electrical, for an alley electric to do the...
Electric in there, it's a lot more... It's pretty spread out. We started all in the...
It says parts and labor to rewire an entire building as well as add receptacles up to $3,571.04.
Hey Jimmy, did you ask about hooking that sink and hot water heater?
He is going to wire to it and somebody blew that hook up. He'll install it and wire it up, but the plumbing...
And that's included in this process, the water heater.
We have the hot water.
Yeah, but I mean, that labor has figured in with this.
When you say it was, right. Oh, sorry.
Parts and labor.
That'll work.
And that was only electrical?
Yes.
There's supposed to be another quote, but they didn't get one in. Apparently, he knew he was supposed to have it in today.
He's without anything for building.
I make the motion, then we accept the move on.
Second.
As soon as possible, did he give you a timeline, Jimmy? When he could start to have one on there, Jimmy?
The only thing that says on there, the quote's good for 30 days. So, I guess it'd be ready to start.
You guys haven't taken enough out where... Does he still have power to his office?
Some power. Not right in his office.
There's no receptacles that are powered. So, we have no internet, no computer. On some of the other end, receptacle cord, will you can extend support in? No number? Because I think they're all on the same circuit.
Yeah.
And all one camera there.
Crazy.
Get, just try to get him here as soon as possible, Jimmy.
Okay. John?
I appreciate your support with electrical, that's a big issue. Right now, the reports are not accessible without me moving my computer to somewhere and get power to it. So, I don't have any numbers for you. I feel like a broken record. We're still waiting on that console. That's the only piece that's still missing for the Explorer. Once we get that in, he acts like that he'll be ready to go with it. Outside of that, the only real thing I'm working on department-wise is our standard operating procedures and getting them up to date. I'm speaking with a company called Lexipol now, and it would all, it would be all online at that point, which would be nice. But I don't know what kind of numbers they're going to give me when we get to that point. That's pretty much all I have, let's see.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Terri?
Nothing.
Ma'am?
Yes, I'm Angela Slinger, and I know, I haven't been attending these meetings before, but I am, however, not a stranger to the town. My father lived here, Albert Esslinger, and I don't know if you guys, you remember Mike being the sheriff and all or whatever. Anyway, needless to say, I'm not the best citizen there is, and I get kind of loud, but I do care about... Should I stand? Sorry.
No, that's fine, you're fine.
I do care about, you know, our earth, and I do care about the pollution and the kids. I know I don't set the best example as far as doing things correctly so that I may lead by that, but I do... Do you know where that holler is over there by Chuck Keller's? That big holler?
Benson's Basin.
You know, okay, right there. I would love to get all of that trash cleaned up. I don't know, just because I don't know if the town is interested in hearing anything like this. It's probably like a, you know, a broken record with me, but since my parents have passed and my husband has, and I'm sure long before that, centuries before, that there are things in the world that happens and leaders try to prevent or try to bring together the communities, societies, and countries in order to astonish, you know, the citizens or to save or, you know, for whatever the prophecy may have, you know, revealed to them. But since then, someone and something and a lot of which are speaking to me in a very profound way. And in the beginning, which was in 2013, it was so profound. With that being said, my dad passing, I didn't know how to take it. I didn't know how to take the messages and signs that I was getting. And I thought it was fake, and I thought, you know, things were li... It was a lie, and I was crazy, and I thought that we, you know, I could just go on continuing to hide the pain and stuff, and I wouldn't, it would be okay, go away, or what. And real, I've never experienced anything like in my life. It was like God speaking to me. And it's, and our children, children, and it was just amazing, amazing, the things that I have experienced here alone. Hey, I mean that, I mean that. Clear down to when I was educating in school, I mean, it was just very different. And so, I carry that with me when I leave. I carry us with me when I leave. And me and him, we get into it all the time, and I, and I do, I leave and I go, you know, to another state. And the pain and the pollution elsewhere is way worse than we could ever have. And I'm thinking, you know, it's just not like that in Montezuma. It's very beautiful. It's so beautiful here. The soil is so rich here that I don't cut through the grass because I think it's rude, and I think it might kill something. So, I just think that along with our energies and along with our heritage and our strength and just from the feeling that I get and from what's being spoke to me, we have to clean up the earth. We have to clean up how we live. And I know I'm not the one to talk, but God is like, if we're not living for Him, He wants to know how we're living, how we're doing it, what steps we're taking to get there and to suffice, or something really bad's going to happen. So, I think we're all doing excellent. I've an eruption here and there besides that valley. And I'd like to maybe get the kids to help clean it up. I mean, I don't know. I can't go out there with a little IVA bag cleaning up all the trash. I'll be there all day and stuff. Very interested in doing so.
Yeah, that is, that is private property.
Oh, I would never step on it without permission. I would not even, that's why I'm here tonight, sir. Thank you.
But, you know, we can't give you that permission because we're not the owners of that property.
Right, right. The town couldn't like...
All we can do is send out letters to property owners. That's the first step to do. But what she said, where, and she's right right there, most of it is on the street side, blowed up against the fences, the blowed out people's yards for all year and winter. And it is there. So, what I want to, want to say, we've got, yeah, to the fence, you're right, we've here a little bit, we're going to do something, so we're going to have a part-time worker starting soon for the town, so that could be one of his projects. Go down and pick up the trash along that fence.
Well, I'd love to be his assistant of some sort. I'm also, I heard from Jimmy down by the railroad trestle that they are looking for summertime help to mow and things like that. And I probably want to send a letter out to the owner seeing it's rude.
Well, we got to because that's just part of it, because no one, it ain't rude because they, it's their job to keep their properties cleaned up.
Who is it?
I don't know who it is.
It's a man from Indianapolis.
Nobody local.
Oh!
Nobody local.
Is it the same one that took over Cobb's Trailers up there, the same Indianapolis man?
No.
No, we've been in contact with him before, but there is a group called Montezuma Pride, and if there is a job like that in town that needs to be tended to, they will get together and help do things like that. They have gone in and helped people's and people's homes who...
Not able.
Not able to clean them up, and they've gone in and helped them. So, there's not been a lot of publicity about it, but there is a group that does that.
Awesome. Thank you for letting me know about that group.
It's, I think they have a Facebook page.
I just think it's important for us. I feel like it's important for us. It's really laying heavy on me, and it's not letting me let go of the reports of the pollution everywhere. So, that's why I wanted to bring it up. Not that we're lazy or we're not doing our jobs or whatever. It's just important to our health and futures.
Yeah, but anything laying along there, up to the fence, and I've just heard, I mean, anybody can pick that up to inside the fence, that's, you can't go in there.
Yeah, we have, I mean, if you want to do that, we got utility bags up at the town building and garbage bags.
Awesome. Thank you for the support.
All right. Thank you. Paul?
Okay. The park board did meet Sunday finally, and we're trying to move forward, but trying not to spend money at the same time because we don't have anything coming in until October, when we have the franks in the park. But one of the things we're looking at is replacing the veterans' memorials before, hopefully before July 4th anyway, when we have program up there. But City Welding has, I think that's it, has showed us what they can do in cutting out a Marine Corps emblem in stainless steel and then backing it with a solid piece of stainless. And then they'll set it with three legs, and we set it down in concrete, like where the old ones were, and it'd be level, the concrete. Mighty nice looking thing, but we don't know, they haven't given us a price. And I won't say what we, we voted for a certain amount. If it's not over that, we're going to go ahead, but we don't have any idea what they're going to be. But they're really going to be nice. If we can do it and get them all done, Dink saw them and Terry saw them, saw, yeah, I guess, but that's one of the things we're doing. And we're trying to, I think we are going to raffle off one of those Blackstone grills and start selling tickets for that and see if we can generate a little money, so, and give it away. October-ish, I think, is what we said, so, and that seems to be one of the hot items right now, is the Blackstone grill. So, I think that's all I have. I think we kind of, Price in the Park is Saturday night?
October 30th.
October 30th.
Are you talking about there in the seam up, or them ones?
Yeah.
Yes. Have we?
Yeah. The ones that's there is the third set, I think.
I think so.
Maybe it's the second set, and we've already got the third set bought in concrete, and Annie's got them stored in a baseball shack over there, but they just won't last, the concrete ones. Hardly believe, but they won't. They just get rolled away, they're nothing. So, we're going to chip them out again and start open. The last time we put them in and...
Poxied over and...
Poxied over and thinking, we got it.
Seal the top and...
No.
Son.
And what we're going to try to focus on a little bit is cleaning that area up and making it look presentable again. It's okay, the okay's not good enough on that. So, that's, that's where we're at, at the little citizen, to the park board.
Thank you.
We meet every, the first Sunday of the month at 4:00, unless it's holiday, you're welcome to come.
I guess we are having a military ceremony to honor veterans on July 4th.
Yes.
That's coming up before the October. So, we are doing that.
So, there's nothing, or anything on the memorial?
No.
No, nothing, not that we know of, there isn't.
I'm John.
Thank you. Yes. Come in, Jim.
Sorry. Will there be a parade and things like that this year from the board?
No.
Nothing like that, my end or anything?
No.
Fire Department's got right around 58 runs for the year so far in county. We had a meeting with the E1 representative on Sunday evening. We'll wait on the quote back on that for a new truck. We received a couple, a few quotes actually, from some other depart, or some other manufacturers. Aaron Fox, which is the manufacturer of the last truck we bought, their range anywhere from 385 to 440,000. And then received another quote from Rosenbauer, which was around 430,000 as well. So, we're going to wait and see what E1 gets, and then we're going to throw up some money somewhere else, so just throwing that out there, unfortunately. And then I'm working on the inventory list for all the trucks. Should start that here probably this weekend, or hopefully it'll take a couple of weekends to get them all done, but that'll give us a line of everything that we've got on each truck, in the firehouse, the rescue boat, and the hazmat trailer.
Are we downsizing the truck any?
It's going to be, I think we're going to get as long, it'll be roughly the same length. It'll be a little narrower, four inches roughly. But that's pretty much going to be your standard sized truck anymore, especially for the custom cab or custom truck. Around 96 to 100 inches wide. I think that's about it.
Thank you.
Do you know if it's in the works for that equipment to be ordered, to be replaced?
I didn't get word from Colonel Alfond now. Try to get back with you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, in your packet, there is a letter from USDI with the agreement, letter stating the code, it's an agreement, amount of $25,000 per year. Here's 2021, 2022, 2023, payable in quarterly payments. And then also, we're doing out the retainer fee of $175 monthly will be admitted from that. Going to look in there and see what they're going to do. And this has also been sent to, yeah, USDI, and it's sent to the...
The letter behind that was sent to Fire Department Safety Division.
Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, there was a, must, must do, get in total compliance with everything going on with the gas. And that's all in the works. Hopefully, it goes well. Any questions, comments?
I've previously made my comments in private, but as, as a town council member, I think I need to publicly say that I am very disappointed in our utilities, that this has happened. And living through a death caused by a gas mistake in our town, we don't need to let these things go, and we don't want to have to live through this again. And I live here, and I trust the people who are given the responsibility of taking care of these utilities so that I can live here safely and comfortably and know that my family will be here, be able to live here comfortably too. And I know that this town is paying those people to do their job and to keep their certifications up and to keep our town in compliance. And I am very disappointed, hurt, and mad that this has taken place, and I just want that to be known publicly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ronnie Bailey has requested to attend training through the Royal Water Alliance on June 17th in Huntingburg in order for his continuing education credits. And that's on a Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday? Okay. And then he'll be taking Friday off, and he and his wife going on a little vacation. And the question is mileage to and from training?
I make the motion, we pay mileage, we do it for everything else.
Yep, okay.
And including the school for us.
Aye.
Yeah, you got that, got it?
You gotta say aye to me.
Yeah, right.
And a copy in your packet, it is a emergency management for Park County.
I copied you in the fire department. It's from emergency management and wanted to know if we were looking for a request for equipment training or exercises that would help with your agency's ability to respond to a hazardous material incident. So, if you guys know of anything that would like a plan for, because all our budget is limited, any requests? And they were unable to...
They would be, they would be more apt to know what it is we need.
Yeah, that's like giving you guys a cup of that.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep, this is a little, very knowledgeable about this, emergency management.
Yes.
Yes. Last time I was over, partnership meeting, he sent some stuff over, some manuals and stuff. Okay, also in the packet, there is a quote from overhead door for the replacement of the operators in the motor truck house. This is just mainly information of what kind of money we're talking about for the 2022 budget. Take a look at that and keep that in mind. Take a look at that and keep that in mind.
Is this something we should include in next year's budget?
Yes, that's what the information's for. Yeah. Seven percent increase coming in 30 days.
Okay.
So, happy. Copy has provided us with the list of violation letters sent to seven...
They need to be sent.
Need to be sent. There's seven that's listed right now.
These are just on local homes. Terry Lou and what do you go, show for our thing, went around and got a list of all the local homes in town. We checked the computer to see which ones have utilities on and which ones didn't. That's why the little footnotes are on that list I gave you. These definitely are in violation. We need to remember if they don't comply, then that 30 days.
We gotta do something.
We gotta do something.
And that can be quite expensive.
Yeah.
I saw down here the first trailer, this east of John Pines, not the one running east and west, but the one running north and south, they're coating the roof on it today.
Which one?
The one, the one that...
Like starts set like this. You talked about the one behind those?
Yes.
Where the skirting's removed?
Yeah.
And that coated the roof today?
They've got ladders on both sides and coating the roof.
Did you happen to see who was there?
The plane boys turned that one down.
That's what I thought too.
The only thing is?
Well, they got the roof too.
You say they started coating the roof?
Uh huh.
I see ladders up there, but I ain't seen no one around.
A person that thought they owned the trailer had sold it to somebody else and they were gonna be moving it out.
Oh.
I mean, either they laid up and solved our problem, but...
Last I knew, the cops still own both of them.
That's why, yeah, I think Scott copies.
They didn't own the one.
We checked the tax records and the property cards.
Yeah, as far as that, but one of the brothers had sold it to the people that rented it prior. I know, but...
We can have to go by and put some of that correct.
Yeah.
I make the motion to send the letters out and we'll do the best we can to keep a backbone and get it done.
I second.
They also, they went around and got a list of the trailers, they checked the properties out in town and made a list of what. So, when I get time to detail that more, we might wanna wait and see how we have to respond to this first before we go.
We gotta start somewhere. And these are priority there.
These ones that are empty and nobody has lived in for over a year, we have to send a letter out.
Yes.
It's due process.
Say the 30 days.
The motion's made in seconds.
In a second. On favor?
Aye.
Okay, Bob?
I'd like to thank all the volunteers and then Jimmy, thank you guys for up there in the cemetery, that looked so much better with them old evergreens out of the way.
I already mentioned, we've already discussed the fire truck and, and the fact that we need to include it in next year's budget and that was my concern was where we were gonna get the money for that. So, that was, that was my only thing.
The firehouse?
The fire, the fire truck.
The doors, what do you?
Oh, well, that too.
Yeah, we have, we'll get the...
Yeah, and the fire truck, both, the fire truck and the doors, the door openers rather.
Yeah.
Yes. So, that would be two things we need to make sure we include. That was my only thing.
You're confused.
Well, I'm not confused, but we'll have to wait and see what that last quote comes in as and you might have to consider this year's budget to...
For the fire truck? Okay.
We should have that probably by Thursday of next week.
How long did it take last time? There was several nights before.
Yeah, well, some of the quotes that we got, a few of the trucks will be ready in May and then a couple of them will be ready in November.
And then are we still looking at trying to file the grant to help or no?
We're gonna have to back to back to rural development or...
We didn't really use it because we paid down to a certain amount on the fire truck. So, didn't you say rural development? We're just gonna roll, roll this over into, so it'll be the difference in this and what the price of the actual new truck would be.
Okay.
And they were just gonna roll this one over.
Oh, so they will roll it once.
Ah.
But they're not loaning us anymore, maybe we just continue to...
Use what we have.
Pay on that and they'll roll the...
Okay. Gotta buy that up then. Okay.
Are we clear to go and buy that extra equipment? Well, the subject we've got, I don't know, change of subject here.
If the insurance thing we received for the damaged equipment...
Just rolling it over.
27...
I'm glad I said something.
If we need to go ahead and get that order because we need to be able to recoup a replacement cost on that. And it needs, I need an invoice by the end of April, the first of May for sure, for us to be able to do that. That's why I keep bringing it up, because we need to get on it. Whatever, whatever he turned in to be retained, that's what's had to be ordered and it can't be used for anything else, it has to be what was claimed damaged.
Is there anything, Shawna?
I have nothing because I heard about that and...
It was a $28,424. And then if we get the invoice for that and turn it in, there's, we'll get like $400 back for the recoverable depreciation and whatever.
Yes, there is a...
It's an insurance term.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad I said something.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Where we at on the water tire? We need to have a meeting, so we talk to these guys to see, we're in midday right now, aren't we?
Well, we, by mental correction, we left it that we're gonna have to come, we're going to come up with like a down payment on it.
Right.
And then we'll, we'll have to give him those figures and then he will re-figure everything from the get-go with that figured in.
But we're waiting to see about that.
Maybe that's something we could try and tackle with projects, maybe next month going over and I can spend a little time with Kathy, get some numbers from Kathy. It's not quite Pat Cowan level, but we, I can do some rough estimates of what you can do and what the impact would be. So, he did email, I know he emailed everyone pictures and everything, he's supposed to email me a copy of the agreement, the thing he was texting. He did email me back, he said, get me one. So, so we can make sure that it's all kosher to them. But, and I don't, you know, the numbers for the big part that I think you, we all wanna know about. So, that's, it'll be helpful to sit down with you guys and decide if you wanna, you do have some money saved here and there.
In water, excuse me.
But you also have to...
Careful, not careful with it.
You know, well, we got all this, let's throw it in there and then a pump goes out out into the wellhouse and so...
Her champagne's a stag, but...
All right.
So, you wanna talk about that on May 6th then, when we have our project meeting?
I mean, he's waiting on us to get...
Yes, yeah. Although I, I probably need to get, that makes me think I don't just need to find, I probably need to get him to send me like some numbers, stuff like, show me roughly what, he, he roughed out some numbers, but I don't have those.
We told him that we had X and Y, so we're just paying this.
Yeah, but I, I'm trying to see how they structure it there, so I'm trying to understand it. So, if he sent us like what he had and then we can use that as, okay, that's the baseline. If we, I can, I can, it's just a calculation, rough it out and figure out if we put in under $50,000, what does that do to your annual payment? I might be off, but I, the big question is how much, how much did you put in? And then what's your annual payment going to be? Then we have to look, okay, my annual payment's gonna be $50,000. What's your...
Pay in.
Yeah, I got a car payment I gotta make. Well, I already got this payment to make and this payment to make and I gotta pay, well, do I have, well, do I have, can I make that $500 a month car payment or do I need to make $300 a month car payment?
Do we need to make, meet before May 6th?
We can.
I mean, so he could go ahead because what maintenance he has to do could have to be done pretty quickly.
If you want me there, that would work out a lot better than the 6th because I have a, I have to be somewhere.
Okay. Well, that's fine.
Find anything, just kind of, anyway, we know where, basically Scott can get it together and...
What, what do you think would be a good date for you, Scott?
Next week I've got, so we have three nights of meetings naturally down.
Well, we've notified the paper.
Last week of April, not last week of April, but I don't think I have any problem with making it.
The only night in the last week of April I can meet would be Monday night, but the rest of the time I'm good.
Plus I need to get up, Kathy's got the material thing, but I would wanna double checks and stuff with her. So, we could try and meet that last, let me look at mine. Oh, I don't have any.
Can you check his date? You guys check your dates and then...
Okay, any night but Monday for me, I can meet.
Last week.
Yep.
Call him in.
Yeah, that last week, I don't have anything to meet.
We're down to Tuesday, Wednesday.
But next week's not...
Dude, what'd you say, Shawna?
They said no Thursday, you said no Monday and I don't think it's gonna be on Friday, so we're down to Tuesday, Wednesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, I can do that either one.
Ain't going nowhere on Friday. Unless there's a baseball game.
Baseball game, see.
But they both say they've been on Thursday, I miss them on tonight. Yeah, I don't, whenever, just call them in, they'll be here.
I'll send you an email.
Put in my file.
I'll send an email to your mailbox.
I'll be going in that person. Scott called the girls some morning, she out there.
There you go, see if it's safe, huh?
Kathy?
Are we gonna...
Townwide cleanup, I forgot.
Oh.
Make sure we don't, we don't have any...
We have, when we see two applications for the temporary help and we've decided to make the offer to John Wild and we'll see when he can start. And it'd be $12 an hour on the dates, no benefit.
That would be pending proof of driver's license and...
Just saying, yep. We need a motion to...
And if it don't work out, move on to the next application.
So, someone wanna make the motion to do that?
Yeah, have the fact record remember his name. I make the motion to hire John Wild for the part-time position, starting as soon as possible. Drive free.
Paul Davis?
Aye. I did forget to mention one thing. The Townwide cleanup is Saturday, May 1st from 9:00 to 4:00 and there will be two 30-yard dumpsters in the utility yard on that date. And it'll be 9:00 to 4:00 or until the dumpsters are full. So, tell everybody you know.
And that stuff out of their yards and stuff not cleaned in their house, how, how and...
Tiffany?
I, I do have something. I'm Tiffany Sinclair, I moved in last July, lived at the corner of Washington and Pine. I walk the dogs in a little, little park that we have just on the other side of Water Street and I've noticed at the end of Pine and Water, right there where they come together, there is a dump that people, I don't know if it's city people or who does, they've been dumping gravel, big chunks of concrete, there's now a countertop in there.
The countertop was not supposed to be put in there, but concrete and fill dirt, we're trying to fill that hauler again.
Okay, awesome.
But building materials and stuff wasn't supposed to, but any concrete, people shoveling up dirt, gravel, yes, because we'll keep shoving it. That's been a hauler for several years.
Okay, I saw it was one of them.
And it was privately owned, but then when the town took it when government done that and we made...
Because I've talked to the gentleman that owns the, he calls it a cabin, but it looks like a two-story garage.
Garage, yes.
What's his name? John. I've talked to him and he's cleaned out those stairs that go down to the water. And so he and I were talking about that, so I told him I'd try to figure out some information on that so I can let him know.
If we go back so far, we'd like to, in my opinion, we'd like to see where people don't have to walk out on the street to walk through the walking trail. So, if we can get it back so far, that would be smooth and maybe just hit the walking trail and without coming out to the road and then back in.
That'd be good.
I did have one question for Scott. Were you able to contact any surveyors or anything like that?
You just would've waited, Terry.
I don't say it, but I think it...
I, I talked to the surveyors in Rockville Trail. I need to get them some things. They seem more, I wasn't talking to the surveyor, I was talking to Mrs. She, I don't think she knew, really understood what I was talking about. But I told her I'd get her the maps that we do have, they wanted to see those and then something showing where we wanted to do it. I, I have emailed, or emailed me back today and I was emailing her, Matt Morris, who's an engineer, a surveyor at Myers Engineering. And he said they'd be happy to look at it. He said they actually did this for Rockville. So, and someplace else, maybe it was Rosemont or something, but I'd be curious to see if Rockville was happy with it, how much it costs Rockville, because that might be a good indication of what it would cost on Zoom. So, it's okay, I don't have, I don't have any numbers though.
That's fine, just moving along.
Okay, Kathy, were you down? Scott? Who are you raising your thing now?
If I missed it, I think we oughta vote just a, for a minute, if this contract with USDIs.
Okay.
I don't think that we, we talked about it, but...
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the contract with USDI?
Make the motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
That's it. Well, I definitely talked about it.
I need to talk to you two before we go.
You're up, Nate.
Nate? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.